I'd like to call the 3,044th Regular Village Board Meeting to order. The time is 7:04 PM. Clerk, call the roll.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Nutzner. Temple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
Need to approve the minutes from the Village Board Meeting of December 10th, 2012. Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
By trustee Voss, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by trustee Lentz. Any discussion on the minutes? Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this point in the agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone wishes to address a comment to the board, now would be the time to do so. Please let me know that you would like to make one by raising your hand, and I'll call you up. Okay, so you have no hands, so I'll close the meeting for public comments at this time. It'll take us to Presentations and Awards. Uh, the first presentation and award is for Chief Ray Rose. Uh, and this is the Illinois Association of Law Enforcement Executives 2012 Executive of the Year Award, which will be presented by Mr. McCollum, who is the executive director, I believe. Sir, if you could give the clerk your address of record, so she could include that.
Daniel McCollum. It's M.C.- C.O.L.L.U.M., 326 Tower Hill Drive, St. Charles, Illinois, 60175. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board and elected and appointed officials. I'm very pleased to be here this evening, and I know it's a little bit in advance of the big hullabaloo that you're going to have Friday for Ray, but I wonder if I could get you to come up here for just a minute. Our association yearly issues an award for individuals, and the criteria for this award is someone who is considered innovative and progressive and demonstrated a track record of serving with insight, fairness, and competence within the law enforcement profession. In addition, recipients should have a history of assuming leadership roles in professional organizations and a background in law enforcement training and education. Ray certainly fits all of those criteria. I had the distinct privilege of meeting him when I was a young police boy in 1976, and he was a seasoned detective. Remember that? And he was a-
(laughing).
Sure you do. And he- he was working a major homicide investigation, and Ray went on to do other things than I did as well. Uh, one of the things that has always captivated me about Ray is his influence on other individuals. Certainly in his role as President of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and as president of the Lake County Chiefs of Police, Ray has distinguished himself. But where I really caught an excellent glimpse of what he means to the profession and the legacy that he will leave is when he was the Chairman of the Board of Directors for Northeast Multi Regional Training. And the 14,000 members who will benefit from the training that that organization provides to our law enforcement civilian and sworn personnel are well-served by having someone like Ray at the helm. I, last year, had the opportunity, as someone who does a lot of instruction for Niemerke, to come to the Mundaline Police Department on several evenings. And the people there didn't know that I was the Chief of Police from La Grange Park. I was just someone coming in. Recently, I finished reading a real short book, which is about all I can tolerate these days unless I listen to them on tape, but it was Lincoln on Leadership. And one of the things that that book said, which has stuck in my mind, is apropos for the experience that I had in Mundaline. Lincoln on Leadership has a passage that says that an organization takes on the personality of its leader. And I went into the lobby of the Police Department there, and I was treated like a customer. I was treated friendly. I was embraced. It was a wonderful, warm feeling, not so in every organization that I go into. Ray, you're going to be showered with a lot of compliments and maybe some good-natured ribbing on Friday, but I would say that of all of the things that you've done, one of the things that has really made you stand above the class is that you're truly a nice person, and I mean that. And on behalf of the Illinois Association of Law Enforcement Executives, I'm pleased to present you with this plaque. Now, Ray, I left it in plastic, 'cause we're in flu season.[317.81][317.83](laughing). But it says, "Presented to Chief Ray Rose, 2012 Illinois Law Enforcement Executive of the Year from the Illinois Association of Law Enforcement Executives." Congratulations, Ray.[330.11][330.13](applause). Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.[333.43][333.45](applause).
Am I supposed to say so?
One or two words, possibly.[344.01][344.03](laughing).
I don't know if I can do that. I- I guess the only- thank you so much, Dan. And I- I guess is what I would say is that, you know, we go through our careers, all of us, in the different fields that we're in, and, you know, we do things. And we don't always realize that from afar, people are watching and observing everything that we're doing. And in this instance, as is pointed out, to be able to have your peers watch from afar and recognize what you're doing, but more importantly, this is shared then as well by all the employees of the organization, as was pointed out. When some stranger walks into our building, and the way they're treated is reflective of the Mundaline community and the Mundaline Police Department. So, I appreciate so much, Dan, you taking the time to come here and for this tremendous honor. Thank you so much.[401.91][402.91](applause).
Thank you very much, Chief, for- for coming out and presenting this important award to our chief. Next on Presentations is one by Mundaline Community Connection. They are here to give us their annual report. This is a group of local businessmen and women who do a lot of things behind the scenes to bring a lot of events to fruition, as well as to do some business development activities. So they're here to tell us what they've been up to this year.
Can I-
Can lower that a little, Sybil?
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Sybil Schechter-Kelly. Ryan Zidko. Terry Skreba. Jerry Brin. We are all from Mundaline Community Connection. These are our bodyguards. Terry and I have bodyguards. You have yours, we have ours. Um, we're here tonight to thank you for all the help that you have given us in the past. A special thank you to Santa. You did an awesome job. Oh, sh- there's no kids here. Thank you very much. You did a great job. Oh, (laugh) um, just one- I know you received a letter. I wanted to go through it with you. Um, we're very busy trying to keep Mundaline in everybody's minds. Um, we're busy, as you know, with Park on Park, Farmer's Market. We had an awesome Beer Fest last year. We have one scheduled this year for June 8th. Hopefully, the weather will be good. And we had 900 people last year. 1,500, we're hoping this year, so, you know, come on. It's- it's wonderful. Um, we had second art fair, a success. Santa's Cottage, always a success. We had 400 and-
Over 400.
Over 400 kids come. And this year, we gave a little puppy out. It was very cute. One little kid got a puppy. Um, we have our Community Days at, um, we didn't give it out. It was given by the parents. Um, we have Community Days at Hawthorne Mall, where Mundaline Community Connection gives money. Terry works at it. I help her. Um, Gourmet Club. We have our luncheons. We have our networking. Um, and- and this year, we are going to try and have like a, I call it Taste of Mundaline, but all the, like a little fair with all the ethnic groups, um, selling their wares, having some music. So we're gonna try that again this year. Going back to the Farmer's Market, we are having a little problem. We had Lori for the last two years. She did her work gratis. She put in over 800 hours of work and didn't get paid. We did apply for a grant. We did not receive it. Um, and so, this year, we need to hire someone. We have wonderful, wonderful candidates, but we, right now, do not have the funds to pay them. So we are here to ask you to help us and approve 30,000 this year for our grant from you. We cannot go ahead with the procedure until we know that you're behind us and can approve this. Anything else? It's only 4,000 more than last year, says our treasurer. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, sir? Go ahead.
So, in other words, if you said, "Okay," and we turned, or we had an excess over and above what we're proposing? Well, I would think what would happen is that in the subsequent year, we would ask for less. Yeah, right, you know, right now, it's- it's somewhat of a guessing game, to the extent that we need to hire this manager for the Farmer's Market. And the Farmer's Market has just been a huge success. Uh, it brings in people from all over the area, as well as benefiting some of the local area folks. So, yeah, I mean, certainly, uh, me being an accountant, budgeting is- is a guess. It's certainly it's based on certain historical data. However, uh, things happen during the year which you have no control over. But we feel that if we could be granted the additional $4,000, that we should be able to accomplish all of our goals. And again, add, in the event that we exceed the budget, exceed the revenues, I would think we would ask for less in the following year. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Um, I was wondering if you could tell me what you have done to solicit funding from some of the businesses in town to cover this, $5,000?
We haven't done anything yet, because we first have been interviewing candidates, and, uh, I just finished interviewing them last Friday. And we were hoping first to come here and request for the funds. And we never have done anything like what you're proposing.
You've never solicited?
No, I mean, meaning right now, for-
Okay.
For this year's Farmer's Market.
In past years, have you solicited some of our-
We have had sponsors, yes. And the money that we use from the sponsors, we use them to create events during the Farmer's Market. And the money that comes in from the vendors is used to advertise the Farmer's Market. So-
I meant some of maybe our bigger corporate partners, that they would maybe be willing to partially underwrite your expenses, and I'm wondering on an ongoing basis if you've done anything to-
We have, but because we have so many events, we try not to go to the same ones.
So, you solicit by event, you don't ask them for a donation for the year to be a sponsor, like for-
No, no.
Everything?
Partially, yes. To the extent that we make them pay dues. And in our budget, we're increasing our dues, so that we can earn more revenues. Some- some of the businesses, while they don't donate cash, they do donate in-kind donations. So, of course, that helps the bottom line, but we don't really account for that.
Okay, again, so I was hoping that you might have solicited some of the larger businesses to be sort of a corporate sponsor for the year at a larger price that would get them more exposure, so that you would reduce your dependency on the village. And what I'm hearing is you don't really do that.
We haven't done it. Um, Lori felt that because the market was brand-new, we didn't want to increase our vendor fees until, you know, a few more years. And this year, instead of having 20 weeks of Farmer's Market, we're only gonna have 17 weeks. So, we felt that we were not gonna increase the vendor's fees this year.
Yeah, I'm not referring specifically to the Farmer's Market. I'm referring to something in total.
Well, what I intend to do this year, we're gonna have a membership drive. And we are going to be sending flyers to all the homes in the area, as well as to the businesses. At that time, we're going to revise our membership dues to, you know, to publicize them to everybody in Mundaline. But that's gonna be probably in March of this year.
And when were you thinking that you needed a- an answer from the village regarding your funding?
Today.
Thank you.
As soon as possible, 'cause you can't hire anyone, totally.
Right.
Anybody else have a question?
I have another question, Jerry.
The revenue from the Farmer's Market is noted for this coming fiscal year at $8,000, and the expense for the Farmer's- Farmer's Market at $7,000. And one of the main reasons for additional village support is the new expense for the director. Is that who you called him? And how much, is that $5,000 you're- you're budgeting for the director's salary?
Yeah.
How much are you paying in rent, this new expense for rent for the site?
Oh, uh-
It's 5,500.
5,500.
Okay, so $5,000 and 5,500 is 11,5, but the Farmer's Market expense is budgeted at 7,000. Why is the- what's the difference? What- what affects the difference there?
Because it's not just rent for the Farmer's Market, it's also rent for Park on Park. So it's under a different category.
So instead of allocating it to-
Okay, so the rent is distributed to different areas of the farmer's market.
Right.
Yeah. So instead of allocating it to both functions, we just put it down as rent. It's at the bottom of the budget.
What if the rent went away? Would you need any additional village expense?
No.
Sure.
No, sir.
Hey, any other questions for? Hey, um, talked to Mr. Lobato, and what we would like to try to do is get some kind of, and they're looking for it as well, some kind of consensus as to whether the board wants to support the, um, the $30,000 amount, I guess, which is more than, is it 4,000 more than last time?
Yes.
And then we would bring those expenses back.
Mr. Mayor, I'll support the $30,000 request. I think it's a very worthwhile organization, and this type of group, like Main Street organizations and other communities, do rely on the communities to help sponsor them. And I truly believe without our sponsorship, they could be, uh, gone. So I- and I don't want to lose you. So I think it's a good, and I'll go along with the 30,000. Thank you.
Since we're not actually taking an official vote, we're looking more for consensus, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Let me just ask a question, if I could, Mr. Mayor, about the, so the sponsorships right now that you're doing are on a per-event-
Yes.
-basis. Okay. And so, would there be redundancies in going to get an overall annual membership from businesses and then hitting them up again for the per-event? How do you feel about that? Would there be some redundancies there?
We do get a membership and sponsorship.
Okay.
Yeah.
Several of our business partners are, you know, not only members, but they may support Park on Park, but also have a donation to the Farmer's Market, and also have a donation to another event.
Okay. So they are going after both in that sense, right? Okay.
We're just not getting, I think what you were asking was a- a extremely large donation to cover advertising for all the events, or, um, and it's always a challenge to get one large donation like that.
Well, I'd try for more than one, but I can talk about that with Terry and Sybil another time.
Well, I- I agree with trustee Temple. We want to definitely keep this thing going, and it's expanding, and, uh, I noted that the new event, the Beer Fest, was wonderful. The numbers speak for themselves right there, so congratulations on that. And, uh, I would similarly support the 30,000.
I have a question. You said you were sending out to residents also this year. Are you going to then allow residents to, um, become members and be part of that fee structure, then?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's- it's a reduced rate for, uh-
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I- I think that's a very worthy idea, and I support all the other comments that fellow trustees have made, and I support your organization.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor. I agree that I think that Mundaline Community Connection serves, uh, a worthwhile purpose for the community. I think that these events are really great events. They help our local businesses. They help our community. They help us in a lot of ways. I had just thought that Mundaline Community Connection would be an independent organization by now. And I guess I think of it kind of like, you know, a parent thinks of their children. You hope at some point they become self-sufficient, supporting members of the family. And, um, I'm really quite disappointed that that hasn't happened. And that not only are you continuing to come to us, but you're increasing your requests, when I think that you haven't really appropriately tapped our business partners. And I'd be happy to work on that with you. However, as same as I wouldn't turn away one of my children in need, I wouldn't turn you away. You guys are a valuable member of our community. I'd like to work with you to help you to achieve some self-sufficiency, but in the meantime, I will support this request.
Yes, I agree that Mundaline Connection is a well-worth organization for all the different events you do take on. It's well, I mean, it's well-notified throughout the entire community, as far as, you know, the, um, National, the Night Out, um, you know, for the a la cars, about three, four, or five times a year. And that's really a great coming-together type of thing, as well as the actual Farmer's Market itself. So I'd be supportive of you. And, um, sooner or later, I'm sure that in the next year or so, you'll be more and more efficient, more self-sufficient. I can see that coming soon, so, great.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree with the board and my colleagues in regard to additional support, monetary support, but I hope no one will forget the in-kind support that village staff provides. Public Works-
Oh, my gosh.
-they're on the- on the mark and providing a great deal. But when you look at- at the progress this organization has made, just in the last three years, it's remarkable. And if we were to provide an amount of support equal to the growth of this organization and the activities that they're sponsoring, and the attention they bring to our downtown, I think we would be required to provide more than what they're asking. So I support this, and I thank you for your efforts, and, um-
Do you have a suggestion?
Most of you folk, most of you folks are either underpaid, or you're volunteers, so, uh, thank you for that.
I had a raise, I had one separate.
Oh, I didn't get that.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Come to Farmer's Market. How are you friends?
Okay. Um, what I'd like to do is, we have a couple of things under my report. One is a conditional use variation, which I'd like to dispose of. Then we'll go, if we, uh, we've got a liquor commission hearing posted for 7:30. We'll get that finished. Then, immediately after the liquor commission hearing, we could do an executive session to discuss personnel. Uh, for that, the board and other parties involved in that will move across the hall, have a meeting, and then come back, and then we'll continue with the Regular Village Board Meeting. So I'll, um, ask the board's indulgence in that schedule, and I think that's the most efficient that we can have. So, uh, under my report, we have the conditional use variation, which is for Seven V's Mortgage Investment Corporation at 539 East Holly Street. Here, we're asking for a motion to pass an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 12147, granting a conditional use variation. Mundaline Municipal Code for Automotive Repair Minor for Seven V's Mortgage Investment with respect to the property located at 539 East Holly, Mundaline, Illinois. Somebody wish to make that motion?
So moved.
Temple makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Lentz, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Voss?
Do we, it suggested in here that they have a tenant, a possible tenant? Do we have a number of what that used for, that tenant is?
Mayor Brevara. Okay.
Do we know what kind of, is it an automotive use tenant?
It's an automotive use, automotive minor, minor repair.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Hey, motion carries. So that item passes. Where's Mr. Lalazern?
He just stepped across the way.
Well, I want to know if he's ready. Do you think he's ready to go? Ask for a motion, so that we can, um, recess the Regular Village Board Meeting.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Meyer. Uh, clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Hey, the meeting will stand in recess. Mr. Lalazern, are we ready to go? Or as ready as we can be?
I am, yes. I've- I've got, uh, four hearings before the commission this evening, and I've got them all worked out with proposed agreed orders, so, uh, I would just need to have the licensee sign them if the commission accepts the recommendations.
So I'll start the liquor commission meeting, then. Like to call the liquor commission, uh, Liquor Control Commission meeting for January 14th to order. Time is about 7:33 PM. Clerk, please take attendance. Here?
Here.
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 Uh, very good. Um, first is approving the minutes of the November 26, 2012, meeting. We find those in Exhibit 1. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Meyer. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are hereby approved. Mr. Lalazern, uh, you're here representing the village this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, as the prosecutor, um, there's four issues before the commission. One for Loretta's Italian Bake Shop, one is for June Chaw Inc., another Tight Head Brewing, and another Jay's Liquors, Inc. You indicated you had some, uh, agreed orders.
I- I have proposed resolutions of all of these, and if I could start with Sushi June Japanese Restaurant. Uh, Mr. Stavros is here on behalf of the licensee. This is June Chaw Inc. doing business at Sushi June Japanese Restaurants. Um, the allegations in the citation are pursuant to a compliance check conducted on December 6th of 2012 with the Mundaline Police Department. Um, they sent a miner into the restaurant to purchase alcohol. They were served by one of the employees, and, uh, we have an agreement, subject to the commission's approval, that they would admit to the violation. They'd pay a $500 fine within 24 hours, uh, and, uh, that would be the recommendation that I have with Mr. Stavros and the licensee.
Okay. Counsel, could you spell your name for the clerk, please?
Last name is Stavros, S.T.A.V.R.O.S., first name Nicholas.
Um, Mr. Stavros, is that what Mr. Lalazern said agreeable to? Um, Mr. Stavros, is that, um, what Mr. Lalazern said agreeable to, to you and your client?
Yeah, that's our agreement.
Uh, let me see if I have a motion, uh, to accept the agreement, uh, from one of the commissioners. Or motion to accept the agreement? Motion by Sample, second by Nutsnag. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do you know if this is a first offense for the owner?
Certain it is for the recent past. Mr. Lalazern, do you have the history?
I believe there was a prior violation about two and a half years ago, uh, in June of two thousand ten. The, um, licensee was before the board, uh, before the commission, uh, on another violation, which had obviously occurred prior to that. So, um, there, there was one prior within the three years.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on this motion?
No.
Clerk, call the roll. Yes.
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 A motion carries, um, so that's approved. Um, just, yeah, I'll sign that. Um, just as a general, um, statement, you know, these are, um, in my opinion, uh, uh, not difficult, uh, compliance checks to, um, to pass. I don't know what happens or why people have difficulty with these. But as, uh, as I was sitting in a goose pit explaining, uh, my frustration with this upcoming hearing to my fellow, uh, hunters and my son, my son pointed out to me that where he go, where he went to school, if you had an up and down ID, which means you're under twenty-one, you just don't get alcohol, even if you are twenty-one, 'cause you have a grace period of a couple of months. So it's... All the excuses about reading and confusion and busyness and everything could be all disposed of just by simply looking at the orientation of an ID. Uh, that's why these are, uh, very frustrating to me because I, I really don't want us to have to do this. But, yeah, we can't be selling alcohol to people who aren't twenty-one, so we're in a bit of a catch twenty-two. So I just, um, sit up late at night sometimes thinking about ways that this could not have to happen, but, um... One of the other guys said to me, "Well, you know, are you, are you railroading these guys? Are you using fake IDs?" I'm like, "No," and it's just, like, very straightforward. Um, so, uh, it, it, it is a bit of a frustration, especially when we see this many. I always hate, to be honest with you, when I get the email that tells me what, I don't know when they're gonna occur. I get the post analysis and it always, uh, is with great trepidation that I open that email. Um, and once in a while, I'm pleasantly surprised when there's zero. When I was, uh, not happy when I saw this one. Okay, so that, uh, that's over for you guys, Mr. Uh...
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lalazern, the next one?
Yes, uh, this would be, uh, involving the Tight Head Brewing Company, one sixty-one North Archer Avenue in Mundaline. Uh, Bruce Dur, the owner and president of Tight Head Brewing Company, is present. Uh, I have spoken to him. Uh, this also involves a compliance check, uh, violation on December sixth, two thousand twelve, in which, uh, in coordination with the Mundaline Police Department, uh, an underage individual went in there and was able to obtain, uh, some alcohol. This is the first violation for, uh, Tight Head, uh, Brewing Company. They have a class M-one license. And, uh, they've agreed to a three hundred dollar fine to be paid within twenty-four hours to the customer service department, uh, with no suspension of the license because of the first offense.
Hey, Mr. Lalazern, just so I understand this correctly, because he has no offenses ever, he has a, a proposed settlement of three hundred dollars as...
That, that is a recommendation based on the history. That's correct.
Right. Mr. Dur, you're, you're here without an attorney. Do I, um, suppose that you're prepared to go forward without counsel?
Yes.
This evening? Okay. Uh, is there a motion to accept this settlement?
Still moved.
Motion by Meyer, second by, um...
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer, if you wouldn't, uh, mind. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll. Boss first, Meyer second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I'm giving these to the clerk when I'm done. Do you want something else done with them? Okay. You want me to sign the copy, Larry?
If you would please, at least one, the copy for the, um, licensee.
All of them or one?
Uh, why don't we sign one copy for the licensee and then one for our file?
Okay. More?
Um, the next matter involves Loretta's Italian Bake Shop, LLC, seven oh nine South Lake Street in Mundaline, uh, in the matter of Lori Josuak, the owner, manager. I've spoken with Josuak and we have an agreement as well. Um, they, again, had a violation of the compliance check on December sixth of two thousand twelve with the Mundaline Police Department, which an underage individual went in and was able to purchase alcohol, uh, at the establishment. Um, they have no prior violations. There would be a recommendation for a three hundred dollar fine to be paid within twenty-four hours and no suspension of the liquor license.
Um, you're here without, uh, representation to a, um, are you willing to go on?
I do, I do wanna mention that the waitress is actually contesting it and has assigned testimony from almost everybody in the restaurant that night, 'cause she did have an ID in her hand, um, as she set the drink down, so she's contesting it. But I'm willing to get fined moving forward, just to...
And, and just for clarification, the, the, um, server was cited by the police department and has a court case coming up. And I believe that's the, uh, matter that she says she's contesting.
Okay.
And that'll be resolved in court as to whether or not there's violation there. But, uh, Ms. Josuak has agreed to accept this recommendation, uh, to resolve this matter as to the license itself.
Okay. Is there a, a motion to accept the settlement offer?
Still moved.
By Lentz, is there a second?
Second.
By Meyer, discussion?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit confused by what was just said, so...
There's a, there's a legal case pending against the waitress. The person that serves is then arrested.
Yes. But if she were to be found not guilty, and what happens if that?
Stays.
There, there's different standards of proof in the, the ordinance violation case in court and then what the commission would have to hear. And, and the disposition of the, um, ordinance violation could be based on different factors that could maybe presented here, so... I mean, certainly, as I explained, it shows where she has right to contest this matter before the commission tonight and she's elected not to do this matter under this agreement, so as to, um, resolve this matter. Is that correct?
All right, any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Um, this is the matter of Kwang Suk Yi, president of Jay's Liquors, Inc., seven hundred South Lake Street, Mundaline, Illinois. Um, the matter comes before the commission this evening on a violation of sale of alcohol to minors, which occurred on December twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve. Uh, this is a little different situation than the other three matters, as this was not a compliance check. Uh, this was based on the police observing, uh, young individuals leaving the liquor store, uh, carrying some alcohol. They were later stopped and found that they had purchased the alcohol, uh, in the store. And, uh, when questioned by the, uh, police, the clerk on duty that night that sold the alcohol said he had not carded the individuals. Uh, he had recommended, or remembered seeing them on a previous occasion when he thought he had taken an ID from them, but he did not in fact card them. Um, the individuals, when stopped by the police, were found to be under the age of twenty-one and, uh, were found to be in possession of alcohol, which they had purchased at Jay's Liquors. I've talked to, uh, Ms. Yi, uh, to her son over the weekend. Uh, they've agreed to a recommenda, recommendation by our office of a five hundred dollar fine to be paid within twenty-four hours, uh, in the customer service department at the village. And I believe there was, uh, some prior, uh, contacts, um, but, uh, may chief can make more specifics as to the last contact, chief?
Last contact was, um, we actually didn't put, uh, bring any charges to them because the, uh, person who made the purchase had identification. And previous ones are outside of this three years, but the, uh, investigation related to this has shown that this store keeper or the salesperson has, uh, sold alcohol to these kids on previous occasions.
And, and that was due to the admissions of those individuals, correct? That, that was not due to any arrests being made? Uh, this is, is it Daniel?
Hmm, Daniel.
Daniel Yi, uh, who was, uh, and then this is your mother? Uh, Kwang Suk Yi? Okay, and you've agreed to this five hundred dollar fine, is that correct?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, Daniel is the person who actually sold the alcohol, right?
Correct.
So I was wondering if he could tell us what he plans on doing differently to make sure this doesn't happen again?
My mother and I, we discussed, uh, implementing more stricter, uh, rules in terms of ID checks, uh, me specifically more. I, I understand that customers do not like being asked twice, three times for the same ID, especially returning customers. But we're gonna bypass that and just ask everybody, you know, just to make sure. Big mistake this night, um, won't happen again, so we're not gonna let this occur. Furthermore, um, I'm not allowed to work there. I'm suspended for right now. So, uh, those are just some of the steps we're taking to never let this incident occur.
Okay, thank you.
I'll tell you, if you go to any college town, they don't care if you've been in the liquor store five hundred times or one time, you've shown ID every time. Um, it's a very simple procedure. It keeps a lot of people out of a lot of trouble. We've got a few businesses in town that do that. Uh, seems to work for them. They've never been here. So you might wanna think about, about that. I think when I go out with my son and his friends from the fraternity, we go to a bar or something, they all have their ID with them. They're all ready to show it. No one... That, that's just the routine, so everybody's used to it. And if they complain about it, well, okay, sorry. But that's just how it goes, 'cause you see the cost to your business. So, um, any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, there are two counts in this complaint through the citation and notice. On the one count, if math serves me correctly, uh, the person that was served was seventeen years old?
Correct.
Count number two, the, the individual served was sixteen years old?
Correct.
And we're alleging that these individuals had been sold alcoholic beverages in your establishment previously, when they presented a legal ID?
After reviewing my security tape, um, I told the, uh, the police officer I came as familiar, that's the reason why I didn't find them. 'Cause, uh, when they came in, you know, we were chatting, and so that, that reaffirmed that, okay, maybe they've been here before. Uh, but after reviewing the tape, I, I realized, you know, I didn't recognize the gentleman. But as for the two counts, it's, I actually sold it to one of the minors, but then it's considered two, two counts, 'cause they're both together.
Well, to have sold the alcoholic beverages to individuals at the age of sixteen and seventeen, and I presume, uh, they got into or were going to get into a motor vehicle and, and drive off.
I believe they were walking.
Well, okay, but, Mr. Mayor, you, and we all have a little heartburn about these enforcement procedures that distinguish violations. But I can assure you, the heartburn would be far greater should some tragedy occur, because we didn't have these enforcement measures. And the fact that individuals at the age of sixteen and seventeen were served in your establishment, I find little way to forgive you in that regard. And you need to have a hundred and eighty-degree turnaround in your protocol and in your thought, in your mind, in regard to the sale of, of alcoholic beverages. We don't wanna see you here again. It won't be pretty. Okay? Thank you.
Yes.
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 Still moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Still moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Here.
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 Still moved?
Still moved?
Second.
The second, sorry.
Uh, any question on the motion?
All right, I'll pay attention.
Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
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 Okay. We're gonna be in executive session. If I could ask the board members, um, Mr. Moscow? Okay, motion to reconvene the regular village board meeting?
Still moved.
Motion is by Lentz. Is there a second?
Second.
By Boss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Clerk, please take attendance.
Here.
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 Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't have any issues with the committee, the process, or the candidate. However, my issue comes up with timing, and I believe that when you're this close to an election, that probably the selection of a police chief should be after the election, since there are 10 candidates for four spots, and a bare minimum of two candidates will be seated in two positions, up to four. And so it's just the timing that I think that we would have been better served to wait.
Okay, thank you. Uh, to Trustee Vost's comment, I would just let the record show that Chief Gunther lives, Deputy Chief Gunther lives at a longstanding family residence, and I don't think it would be, I just don't see forcing somebody to move from a residence for a job. So, that's all I have to say on that matter, too. Any other discussion on the motion?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I can appreciate the concern and the interest in having employees in the village, live within the village, and I think I would recognize that as a tiebreaker in regard to candidates who were very closely qualified. But in this particular instance, I think an evaluation has indicated that Deputy Chief Gunther is extremely qualified, and in effect has been the outstanding candidate among over 30 who were interviewed. And as such, I don't think that residency should be the reason for selecting second best or far second best. In regard to an election coming up, well, I don't think any of the candidates in the election, should they be approaching this selection process, would select second best either. So I, I see no point in waiting at this, at this interval, and I'm very comfortable recognizing Deputy Chief Gunther as the most qualified by far, and I'm far more comfortable with an internal candidate making that selection than I would be someone from outside the village who we have really no experience with. So I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable in approving this resolution to appoint Deputy Chief Gunther as our next chief of police.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, as one of the members of the interview committee, I just wanted to say, Eric, you did a fantastic job. Eric was the best candidate that we had, and I hope you will be a chief for a long time, Eric, and I absolutely will support the appointment.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? For all the conspiracy theorists and others who may believe that this was a done deal and that outside candidates never had a fair shot, or whatever conspiracy theories there may be, I would be happy to provide anyone who feels that way with a copy of my January 8th, 2013 memo, which basically outlines the process by which we went through to select the new chief. My marching orders to the ad hoc committee, which include our, which included our appointment consult, our employment consultant, Mr. Moscow, included Ray Semple, John Lumbeto, and our personnel individual, Lynn Mailey. My marching orders to that committee was to produce the best chief candidate, and all people had an equal footing, and clearly it was Eric who fulfilled the best candidate criterion across the board, so that's why he was selected. Any other discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll.
Luntz?
Yes.
Nutschnig?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
No.
Okay, that's one motion. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so what'll happen is back on the 28th, we'll bring the motion, the resolution back, and the ceremonial event. So, congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.[935.12][935.12](APPLAUSE).
And we'll go on to trustee reports, Public Works Committee, trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one motion for tonight, and it's related to weed control and fertilization, and that would be exhibit PW-1. The motion I'd like to make tonight is to authorize the Department of Public Works and Engineering to solicit bids for weed control and fertilization.
The motion is by Meyer, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Semple, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Meyer.
Well, um, one of the questions that I'd just like to bring up is that we do have a lot of complaints about our sidewalks, the brick pavers and that, is this part of that plan?
Okay.
In reference to what exactly about the brick pavers, weeds growing through them?
Weed, weed control.
No, that would, that would be covered as part of the landscape maintenance contract that we authorized.
All right, so I just wanted the clarification of where that fell in. Okay, thank you.
Meyer?
Yes.
Luntz?
Yes.
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 Yes. And that would be all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this evening, Finance Committee considered two motions. Uh, the first is to approve a motion for the payment to trustee Vost for her expenses associated with the recent Illinois Municipal League Conferences, this in the amount of $528.64, and I'll make that motion to approve this payment.
Second.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Second motion is a motion to approve a number of bills totaling $13,453.40 to AT&amp;T, I believe, yes, AT&amp;T. Uh, I believe we'll have one abstention in regard to this motion, and I will make the motion.
Second.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
This evening on our omnibus list of motions is a motion to pay a bill list totaling $2,939,219.61. My recollection, this, uh, this is a record for a reoccurring bill list, but examining the contents of this, of this list, we have some major expense, and I'll list some of them for you. Twin Supplies Company for lighting upgrades, that somewhat of a pass-through, where we have received funding for this, this in amount of $117,307. Uh, the amounts that we approved to Weston for construction downtown in, uh, public improvements, as well as design, the design-build agreement for the new building. One of these amounts, $181,234, the second, $633,455. We have our regular water bill to the Joint Action Water Agency, $183,101. And on top of all these, we have our annual bill to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, Irma, $684,391. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have one item under public safety in relation to the police department, and it's a motion for BACIT training, in that the current rule, current ordinance does not regulate the renewal of BACIT certifications. This proposed ordinance, probably one of the final ordinances proposed by Chief Rose, will require that the BACIT training be redone every three years. Uh, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance, amending ordinance number 04-12-69, regulating the sale of alcoholic liquor.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Um, I, yes, please, Mr. Mayor, I had a question I didn't exactly understand. Um, in this, uh, in the board information, in the summary, it says that BACIT training programs may be good for one year, three years, or indefinitely. So does that mean that the one year we won't accept anymore, or that they could have a one year and lapse it for two? I didn't really understand that.
Chief, you gotta take this one.
The ones where they apply and they get the one year, then they still have to get it every year.
Okay.
The problem that we're having is with the three year and the indefinite, and what actually has brought this forward is every year, we meet with all the literature holders, and they have kind of requested that we look at this and do this, and we've been in touch with the Illinois Liquor Control Commission and the state. The state is usually just the same action.
Okay.
But I don't know that we wanna wait for them in light of everything else that's going on. So basically, is what this does, is it allows us then to ensure that servers are going to be reeducated and updated at least every three years.
Okay.
And the other thing I've pointed out is that we do the BACIT training here, and it's to no cost to the, the folks who come in, so the service that we provide with a volunteer instructor.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll.
Yes, yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is related to the fire department, and it's pertaining to a staffing change for contracted firefighter slash paramedics, seen as exhibit public safety dash number two. This goes back to a public safety committee meeting we held on, back on November 26th. We inadvertently didn't circulate the notice internally, and the board members who were not on that public safety committee meeting, committee did not receive the reminder. It was on the agenda, although. And then on, we discussed this again on the board meeting of December 10th, and what this amounts to is we have had a, about 20 part-time, excuse me, temporary firefighters who work for Metro come and go through the fire department, reason being is these guys are attempting to become firemen, many of them are on lists of other communities, and actually I believe it's near 100% have gone on from Metro to take a full-time job at another fire station. Uh, well, the time has come now where it's probably cost-effective when you consider all of the hours of training that we're constantly doing for these new temporary employees as they come on and try to integrate themselves into our work staff. So with that, Chief Sash, could you get into this a little bit more, since you're the expert on this?
I think, very simply, the proposal is, we had a position that opened up the end of November, uh, that, where we have seven current contracted employees, and the request is not to get rid of the entire program, but to just take the one position that opened up in November and convert that to one of our own employees with a three-platoon system or three-shift system. Having two on each shift fits our service profile, and it works. Um, we have a variety of reasons why some of them will not be leaving us, and so we've had a little bit more stability, but what we'd like to do is balance out to have two per shift and take this one position that opened up and convert that over. We have the luxury at this point that ironically enough, to trustee Semple's comment earlier about the moving on to other full-time positions with other departments in a career position, the number one person on our list happens to come from our Metro contract, so you can see the quality of our training program and how we develop these personnel so that they're ready for that next leap. I try to tend to call the contract service AAA baseball. Um, they're waiting to get to the bigs, and they hope that they're gonna get there. Um, so we've, you know, we take a lot of pride in the training of them, but that's the problem, is the unpredictability of when they're gonna leave. So if we convert this one position over, over to a traditional member of the department, we slow that process down of the revolving door and balance out our shifts with two per shift.
trustee Sullivan, I know you have some thoughts that you wanted to make sure we discuss this evening as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a number of concerns that perhaps we haven't investigated as thoroughly as we would. I understand the chief, and I respect the chief's concerns and his recommendation. Um, there are, there are two areas of concern I have. The first is that we're in the process of negotiating a labor contract with, with our firefighters, and, uh, at this point, I, I don't know as it's advisable that we change the, the structure of doing business in regard to the relationship between regular firefighters and contract firefighters. Also, I'm not, I'm not sure about the savings in two areas, both what the contractor provides us or contracted employers by Metro, who is the firm that we contract with. Secondly, in regard to, to training requiring, requirements, I understand that these contractors are contracted employees, not engineers, that is, they can't drive fire trucks, they drive ambulance. Um, that may be something that creates a problem, but I don't think, what type of, is this CDL license, is it, what is that license?
Well, we're actually in Illinois, we're a non-CDL, we're an exempt CDL, so we do not have a full CDL, you know, commercial driver's license classification. The state allows firefighters to have an exemption, there is a testing process they go through, but it's not the full CDL.
But there's some certification that...
This Office of the State Fire Marshal has a training requirement for fire apparatus engineer in order to be able to go through the ability to pump and operate fire apparatus.
So it's our, our local requirement that we have to be certified engineers to drive one of our fire trucks?
It's...
But the state doesn't require it?
Well, the state provides a certification, we do as a fire service industry pretty much throughout the state with the exception of... And at this point, I don't know as it's advisable that we change the structure of doing business in regard to the relationship between regular firefighters and contract firefighters. Also, I'm not, I'm not sure about the savings in two areas. Both what the contractor provides us, or contracted employers by Metro, who is the firm that we contract with. Secondly, in regard to training requiring requirements. I understand that these contractors are contracted employees, not engineers. That is, they can't drive fire trucks, they drive ambulance. That may be something that creates a problem, but I don't think, what type of, is this CDL licensing? What is that license?
Well, we're actually in Illinois, we're a non-CDL, we're an exempt CDL. So we do not have a full CDL, you know, commercial driver's license classification. The state allows firefighters to have an exemption. There is a testing process they go through, but it's not the full CDL.
But there's some certification that...
This Office of the State Fire Marshal has a training requirement for a fire apparatus engineer in order to be able to go through the ability to pump and operate fire apparatus.
So it's our, our local requirement that we have to be certified engineers to drive one of our fire trucks?
It's...
But the state doesn't require it?
Well, the state provides the certification. We do as a fire service industry pretty much throughout the state, with the exception of rural areas that have a difficult time doing it. I would say most departments in Chicagoland area require FAA certification.
Now, the savings that we've been looking at is somewhat minimal. But Metro, according to the contract, provides these firefighters to us with not only insurance, work and scuff insurance, liability insurance, you know, the types of insurance. They're uniforming these firefighters and providing them with firefighter's gear. We're not paying for that gear, according to the contract.
Well, we do in the scope of when they price out the contract, they price out that contract based on what they think their turnover ratio is gonna be within the period of that three-year contract. Ironically, because we've been hit so hard with this over this last three-year period, we've got some early negotiations going on with Metro because their contract is coming up in May. What we're going to see is a recovery aspect within the scope of that contract in basically buying back that gear. So the fact that they, they pay for their gear and pay for their uniforms, that really comes through the contract price. So we will see, we will see a recovery process by them because we've had such a large volume of people going through this. It's not an uncommon practice within that. They, they don't eat ten or twelve sets of gear in a, in a year. That's very uncommon for them.
And I, and I recognize the, the turnover is a problem from an organizational standpoint, as well as a cost standpoint. I'm not sure I understand what's happening with, with the turnover. I don't know what, what Metro would say. Metro not paying as much? Or are we training so well that these firefighters that are contracted, firefighters are in a better position to get a regular job with some fire department somewhere?
I'll go in reverse order. Our training, you would not believe, we actually have people knowing that the Metro or the contract, because there's, there's actually four major contractors in Chicagoland area. Contract services, people that are trying to use that as a stepping stone for a career launch. They actually seek out Mundeline as a place to go because they know that we have a very high success rate of people that then test to get on lists are doing very well. As Trustee Simple mentioned, everybody that's left has gone on to a career position. So part of it is, is that our reputation is so strong, they come here. But that also creates the problem of they're here for fourteen to twenty months, as I had identified back in the Public Safety Committee meeting, and then they're gone because they are exceeding and doing well in that testing environment. As to the cost factor, their salaries are substantially less than what we pay. So in the scope of the contract, I think about our average is eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars an employee. You know, there is a margin of profit on that than there is, than their benefit packages. And those personnel are paid probably about, I would say, rough estimate off the top of my head is about sixty percent, fifty-five to sixty percent of what our starting salary is. So you can see where they want to get into the market. That's why I attribute it, my best correlation is triple-A baseball to getting into the biz. That you are, you're at a point now where you're at this pay where you're trying, it's kind of like in the airline industry, commuter airlines moving yourself into the system of a large airline. It's the same correlation. There is a stepping, you know, stool through that process of that career development. And that's exactly what the contract services do. They're a lot different than they originally were intended to be.
Are contract employees paid overtime?
Within the scope of the Fair Labor Standards.
Within, alright. But that's paid to their employer, Metro. And then, even, even on that, on that basis, they're paid that much less than our regular firefighters? Has that differential existed throughout our experience with employing contract firefighters? Fifteen years ago, it was the same way? So the difference, in your view, is amount of training they have that qualifies them in the last few years more effectively for a regular firefighter's job than it did here in the past?
And we, you know, we train to that level so that we can try to create as much of a seamless balance to when we respond to a resident's home. You can't identify the difference between the contract service versus our people, or part-time for that matter. We try to make sure that that's all kept at the same standard.
When the contract specifies that these contract firefighters, that is, the contract with Metro, and the workers that the firefighters they provide are to come with us, to come to us with training, that is, they are recognized by the state firefighter, paramedic. We add to that training. We're doing that for our regular firefighters? We're treating them in parallel?
Correct. When we hire a new firefighter, that recruit training, and then there's a phase-two training that they go through in that first year, it would be the equivalent, whether you're a contract employee or a full-time employee, to do it.
And other fire departments have experience with contract firefighters, aren't...
Some in this area, correct.
Those that have experience with them, are they experiencing this type of turnover?
They are, although that slowed down with the economy. But that certainly, it's starting to come back around, and there are some communities very close by that jettison the program completely because it got to the point of that turnover ratio was just too much to handle anymore.
Other than a, from a service benefit? Are we, are we looking at making this change from going from seven to six? Are we looking at doing away with contract firefighters?
That's not the intent at this point at all, not at all.
They're gonna stay at six, then, in your view?
That's the game plan.
Do you explain that this, this makes a big difference in the organization?
It'll give us that balance, you know. At some point in time, and nobody can remember historically, how we ended up with, the intent was two per shift. And somehow, in the transition at some point, we ended up with that seventh. And when I arrived as the chief, that's the staffing model that we had was the seventh. And I could not have anticipated, I will tell you honestly, that we would have had the turnover that we've had since I've been here for five years.
Alright, well, you know, based on this sort of explanation, I, I think I still have some drawbacks. But I think that the benefits, as they're explained, are greater than any potential concerns that I might have. And again, they're, they're simply potential concerns. And I think you would satisfy me in that regard, so I'll support the motion. Second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I read your memorandum, Trustee Sullivan, and one of the things that you brought up that I just want to address quickly was that you had talked about consolidation of a regional fire department district. And again, I wanted to remind everyone that I have been involved in working with Next Generation 911, and all of that involves. And one of the things that we really need to think about before we even entertain what you were proposing is a consolidation of dispatch centers. And in my work with the FCC, the telecommunications industry, public safety officials, and so on, that some of the things that have been identified is that as Next Generation 911 evolves, you're looking at people wanting to place 911 calls via text, via Twitter, via video, many of the other new features that are coming along, which then requires more equipment, more expensive equipment, more personnel to also monitor that additional equipment and those additional means of turning in 911 calls, and more training for those personnel. So I think that even before you began talking about any kind of consolidation, that you really should be also looking at consolidation of our dispatch center as some of our neighbors have done. And that would be probably something that would need to be done even before you could consider anything else.
Well, no doubt, this dispatching consolidation is something that's been real effective for a lot of public safety agencies in Lake County. But the memorandum that you referenced, it's four or five mountains to climb compared to what we're discussing here.
No, I, I understand that, but you did bring it up, and, and I did want to address it.
Alright, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Or call the roll?
Simples.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Motion, Carrie, any other Public Safety matters?
Thank you, Chief Sashko, anything else for fire?
One other quick thing from, I'll put on my blood committee hat, not necessarily the fire department, but there is a blood drive at Mundeline High School this Saturday from nine-thirty to three. Those people that donated at our December event, like Trustee Lentz, are not eligible yet. You can come back to the fire department in February for your donation, Mr. Lovato also. So I just wanted to let you know, that's a community event. It does support the high school, so we'll try to encourage as many people to get to that drive because you do have a scholarship program for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Rose, anything for police? Well, Chief, in case I can't make the next village board meeting, which there's a chance, I just wanted to say it's been a real pleasure serving with you all these years. And in case I'm not here next board meeting, best of luck on your retirement. Stay out of the newspapers.
Thank you.
That is all for Public Safety, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Community Development, Trustee Boss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple things. The first thing is that, as you know, we received the down, the New Urbanisms, Congress for the New Urbanisms, Illinois Chapter Twenty-Twelve Merit Award for our downtown project. The plan, um, that we've been working on for a long time was recognized because it created a vibrant town square, increased residential density, provides essential infrastructure, generates revenue to fund future improvements. It creates new jobs by attracting new businesses. And Mr. Burrera is holding it up for everyone to see. And that is hanging in his office, if anyone wants to go visit it. And that was a very exciting award. So it was written about in the last Mundeline Matters. And it's a cool thing that we've all been working very hard for, and it was recognized for fulfilling principles of walkability, sustainable design, outstanding architecture, landscaping, and urban planning built in harmony with their physical and social contexts. So kudos to everybody. Also, we have some new businesses in town. First of all, before our board meeting, I handed out some coupons from Golf Zone, which is at eighty Oak Creek Plaza. For those of you who play golf, this is indoor golf. It's indoor, I don't know how else to describe it. It's, it's, okay, virtual indoor golf. But they were swinging like you bring your own clubs and really swing the ball. It was quite amazing. Anyway, and there are pictures from last week's ribbon-cutting on the village website for anyone who wants to see them. We also have the Sitco Gas Station at two-ten East Holly Street is under new ownership. Quality Finishing Services at four-oh-three Washington distributes buffing pads, abrasives, and miscellaneous shop supplies. It's a warehouse-only wholesale. And then Soto Auto Repair is opening at four, five-thirty-nine East Holly as a new business. As always, we would like all of our residents, all, everyone to support all of our local businesses. And that is all, thank you. Yes.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I have no report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one motion here tonight regarding the Jawa. We all know we get our, our water from Lake Michigan, and as Trustee Sullivan has pointed out, it's of very high quality. And just a, just a little, I guess, just a resolution that we have to pass here regarding our membership there. This is a motion to adopt a resolution approving certificate of member municipality regarding the Central Lake County Joint Action Water Agency and authorizing the village administrator to execute said certificate on behalf of the Village of Mundeline.
Second?
Yes.
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 Mr. Bushay, do you have anything regarding, okay, very good, that's it, thank you.
Question in regard to that, Mr. Mayor. There's a governing board, Joint Action Water Agency, and we have a member on it. Okay, good, then you're the, you're the one, you're the one to answer these question, or this question. Does Joint Action Water Agency have a formula for additional member coming in as far as the recapture of capital expense to create the infrastructure for Jawa? Well, as I recall, the Village of Mundeline, when we entered in to the Joint Action Water Agency as one of the original members, we issued bonds that resulted in a tax rate increase of twenty-five cents. We went, which was almost a fifty percent increase in, in the real estate tax rate. A huge expense to the Village of Mundeline. And that went not just to put the pipes to Mundeline, from Libertyville to Mundeline, it went for the entire system's infrastructure, that in the lake, everything. Now, municipalities far away, like in Wakanda, are calculating the cost. But I believe they're only calculating the costs of tapping in to the system as it exists in Mundeline. I don't think it goes any further west. Graves Lake have, they're in. But their, their calculations really are not covering any recapture for Jawa and its members of the original capital expense. They're, they're just talking about the pipes from the western edge of the Jawa domain to them. And I say baloney. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Yeah, well, I don't have to remind anybody here that somebody wants to hook into our water system within the village of Mundaline, we suffer them a rather substantial hookup charge in order for them to participate in the cost of the infrastructure. We don't just charge them, I mean, they don't just pay for the cost of running a lateral from our main to their house and then start paying for water. A substantial capital recovery cost. Okay, thank you.
No move?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I just had one item, and I'm going to prompt Mr. Flynn. I'd like him to give a report on the automated horns. But I'll start with my report just quickly, just as an update, let everybody know that on the 28th board meeting, we'll have for the board to consider the bid amount for the new village hall. We call it the guaranteed maximum price in the agreement. We're meeting with Trustee Sullivan and Trustee Lentz to go over the numbers with them since they were the two trustees that sat in at the end to negotiate the financial end of the agreement, if you will. So we'll be meeting this week, and then on the 28th, we'll bring back for the board action the guaranteed maximum price for the village hall. And then with that, I asked maybe Mr. Flynn to give a quick update on the, I saw some emails flying around, and so I'd like, maybe you can say a few things about that.
I think there's good news. It's only been going on several years, but we're in the final leg of our journey to remove the automated horns. The final step was the village of Buffalo Grove, who is the Quiet Zone Administrator, filed what's called a notice of establishment, which reestablishes the Quiet Zone. If you recall, they have to be reestablished every three years, and this is concluding that obligation. But that Quiet Zone includes the removal of the automated horns. So we can, now we have to wait 21 days, and then the Quiet Zone automatically goes into effect. After that 21 days, as soon as possible after that, we will remove the automated horns. We, the board adopted a contract, approved a contract with Railworks earlier in December. So they're ready to go. Adam's working with them and coordinating that with the CN, who will be involved in removing the equipment from the bungalows and providing the flagmen. And like I said, as soon as the Quiet Zone goes into effect and we can schedule Railworks, they'll remove the horn. So I would guess maybe another month from now, we should have them...
Weather permitting, we should have them out. It's a quick process.
Then we will have a true Quiet Zone.
And having been through, are we going to make candy bars and coffee mugs saying now it's quiet again? Because I have, I have one sitting in my office, I think.
Those are now collector's items.
Having been through both processes, which one was easier, getting them or getting rid of them? I think this has been more torturous.
Well, I don't know. Getting them was a pretty long and involved process.
Pretty torturous as well.
Yeah, that was, that was a bit of a work. But getting rid of them is a lot harder than it seems.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno? Madam Clerk? Thank you. We've already had our executive session. Is there any other business? Motion to adjourn?
No move.
By Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
By Notschneig, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.